Yeah, I'd like to call our council to order. Would we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to recall it for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, which is redeemed of justice for all.
Thank you. Sean, would you like to take your call, please?
Heather Logan.
Present.
Rob Toyer.
Here.
Deborah Nelson.
Here.
Del Blythe.
Here.
Yvonne Gallardo Van Ornen.
Here.
Alicia Noback.
Here.
Jan Schweddy.
Present.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Okay, we'll start off the meeting tonight with a period for public comments. We do have and has been distributed to the council members one written statement from a citizen. And we do have, I think, one gentleman that would like to comment. Please step to the podium and state your name and we'll give you three minutes and your address.
Do I have to show?
Yeah, please.
Okay, good evening. My name's Larry Johnson. I've lived and worked around the Arlington area for over 30 years. And I want to thank the commissioners and all the people who work for the city. It's been my pleasure to live, I live on Dunham currently, and to live in the city. The only problem I have is you've made this so nice that, look what's happened in 30 years, we got traffic. But no, I just want to say thank you for the commissioners and especially thank the mayor. Today, I came in, I had an issue, and the mayor was available. He was prompt, he solved my problem. He was respectful to me, and most of all, he was fair. And I don't think we hear enough positives sometimes. So, mayor, thank you for your time today and your attention to my issue, and I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate all the work the city does to make this place a great place to live, and I want to thank you guys.
Great, thank you. Okay, move on to...
Enjoy.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the consent agenda as noted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our first item tonight, the Police Department Lateral Hiring Incentive Program. Sean?
Thank you, mayor and council. So, we'd like to bring forward, bringing back the lateral hiring incentive. This is a little bit different for in-state, Washington State applicants, it's a $20,000 incentive. For out-of-state, it's $10,000. It's paid out in two lump sums when they get hired and one after they've cleared their probation. We went for a year and didn't have to hire anybody, and we went for about another nine months, and we've gotten 27 applicants but really have not been able to get a good lateral applicant. So, we're hoping that this will bring some more applicants to our doors so we can fill those positions.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? None seen, we have a motion?
I move to approve the limited-term lateral police officer incentive program, which will begin October 20th, 2025, and sunset December 31st, 2026 unless revoked, modified, or canceled prior.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item number two, ordinance adopting island crossing subarea plan and plan to action. Amy?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Vanny and members of council. So, it looks like everyone in the audience, besides a couple council members, were here last week. So, I'm not going to do a presentation unless requested. Excuse me. Hearing no request, we'll move forward. So, in front of you tonight is the ordinance adopting the island crossing subarea plan. Not sure I need to go much farther unless there's questions.
Do we have any questions? None seen?
Can we chair?
Yes.
That is here.
Okay.
Okay, question seen. We have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance adopting the island crossing subarea plan and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, majority of motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number three, ordinance adopting Arlington Municipal Code Chapter 20.119. Again, Amy?
Thank you. So, this ordinance is adopting Arlington Municipal Code Chapter 20.119, which is the development regulations and design standards for the island crossing subarea plan.
Any questions on that? Okay, none seen?
I move to approve the ordinance adopting AMC Chapter 20.119 and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries with the majority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, change order number one for Division Broadway Restoration Project. Jim Kelly?
Thank you very much, Mayor Vanny and council members. Before you tonight is change order number one to the Division Broadway Restoration Project in the amount of $299,135.90. This change order has been, was predicated because of, we received a bad set of construction drawings from the consultant that we hired, and the consultant that we hired, they stopped doing municipal engineering, and we couldn't get them to update the drawings. So, instead of arguing it, we just went in-house. We have an engineer, Krista Stewart, who picked up the drawings, and she did a great job, and I think it's evident by what's been produced so far. So, these drawings are mostly for things that were missed and omitted from the first drawings. We had grade breaks, quite significant grade breaks, 18 inches off from the existing elevation. We had curbs that did not have any slope on it, so they would not drain. We were missing new driveways to the, new driveways to the new, to the alleys. There were ADA ramps that were missing, and there was sidewalk that was also missing. So, all in all, it took a little while to get the drawings done, but we worked with the contractor, and the pricing for this is very fair.
Any questions? Jan?
Yeah, just quick, do you have any kind of closing date when it's going to be done?
The, so Phase One and Phase Two have been done except for the landscaping and the striping. They're working on Phase Three now. It'll be completed next Friday.
Oh.
And then we're going to just have a small little patch right where Olympic meets up, and that's Phase Four.
Oh, wow, thank you.
So, middle of November, we should be ready.
Keep our fingers crossed for good weather.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve contract change order number one to the Division Broadway Restoration Project and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any comments or reports from council members? Michelle?
I attended the Holman, or what's it called now? Freedom Bridge from the Holman Recovery Center on Saturday, and that was, there was a lot of people there, so that was really neat to see that opening. And they did a really nice job of setting that up, and Edmund did a really nice job of presenting it and facilitating the entire thing. So, it was pretty nice. And Heather was there, Dawn.
Sixty beds.
Yeah, total sixty beds we'll have, right? Nope, thank you. Any others? Okay, none seen. Paul, do you have any?
I'm going to defer. I'm going to ask Jim to give us an update on the Miles Sand and Gravel project.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much, Paul. Mayor Vanny and council members, there is a development going in outside of Arlington on SR 530, just a little ways north of the Arlington Heights Road on, well, obviously on the, not in the river. And it's a proposal on a piece of property that is currently owned by the Arlington School Board, and they are looking to get rid of it. They want to sell it. They are under, I believe, an option to sell to Miles Sand and Gravel. They're under contract with them. And this started, this process, when they put in and applied for a conditional use permit through Snohomish County, started in 2021. We commented it on the first CUP that was issued stating that the location of this sand and gravel pit and the size of it and the amount of operations could threaten our water supply that feeds the city, that it will impact the Still Gwamish River, and that this operation is going to be putting 205 new trips a day onto the roadway, trucks. And 164 of those, based on what the engineer said, are going to be coming through Arlington on Burke Avenue. And that estimate that they gave was a low estimate at mine production. They said that if demand increases, then they will have higher rates of trips. And this isn't, this is a 25-year operation that they're stating. It will go longer if they still have exit, and that's only taking out not all of the assayed gravel that's in the ground. So, this could very well go on for, you know, 30, 35 years of operation and impacting to our waterways and onto our roadways. Last Monday, I took this issue and I spoke before the school board, because I don't think, I didn't think they were aware of all the comments that the county has received. Miles Sand and Gravel, they pulled their first permit because of the amount of comments. They received 21 comments, and they applied a second time, and they, this time they have 26 comments against it. Lot of those were the same ones from the first time, so the city was the, we submitted our comment letter on, in 2021, and then we resubmitted our comment letter when they proposed this for a second time, on the two grounds. One, that it threatens our source water, and number two, that the amount of impacts that it'll be doing to Burke Street is, it's not fair to the community, especially since Washdott, who entered into an agreement with the City of Arlington in the 1990s, and that Burke Street bypass was only a temporary use of SR 530. That SR 530 had a Phase Two that it was going to be moved north of the Still Gwamish River, and then it was going to cut over and be, and join up at Arlington Heights Road. They have not taken any movement on that, nor have they done any of the improvements that they promised the City of Arlington by putting traffic control signals at the time, is what they wanted, over at the SR 9, SR 530 intersection, and also at the Broadway and Burke Avenue intersection. So, yeah, so basically, that was it. And I just, when I petitioned it to the school, I just suggest, I think, I said, I think they need to rethink this sale, knowing that the impact that they're going to have to the community, you know, the sale happens today, but this develop, this operation will be there for decades to come and will be impacting our community. And I just recommended that they take another look at it. It was also, we've been working with the Still Gwamish Tribe, who also opposes this development.
Jim, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm curious if you've estimated in your engineering line, knowing how many of those trucks would be coming down Burke, and knowing the work that we just did on those roads, because they're not built for those heavy-duty double dump trucks. So, how quickly do you estimate that they would tear up our new roads that we just, the taxpayers paid for?
I am sure that a percentage of those new 164 trucks a day will, some of them will meander through Arlington and try to get by, because the roundabouts can't take...
That's what they do. Yeah, I see them every day.
But what, it's not fair to, it's not fair to the commuters, the people that live up in Derington that want to get to work and want to get to I-5, and they wind up cutting through Arlington. A lot of them go the normal way, just take SR 530 down to SR 9 and then loop on over to I-5. But I will see more and more getting frustrated by the delays, by the inaction of Washdott to take care of their intersections, to put in controls, whether they be roundabouts or whether they be signals. And the people that get the brunt of it are our citizens, our citizens on Newbury, our citizens on Manhattan, and the people who want to be walking down, you know, Arlington streets, Arlington's new corridor that we just were finishing building.
The trail. Another thing to look at would be what Granite Falls did, because this happened with the mining companies in Granite Falls, I want to say 20 or more years ago, because I lived in that area between Lake Stevens and Granite, and it totally changed the neighborhoods and the landscape of Granite Falls. And I encourage my fellow council members, if you haven't, if you grew up in the area and you knew Granite Falls for the beautiful little mountainside town it is, now the mountains have disappeared, the foothill mountains, and it's all mining, it's all gravel. It's just heartbreaking to me to see what they've done and the devastation to that area. So, and I wouldn't say that it really helped the city at all, but just my input, and I'm glad, thank you for standing for us citizens in this.
And it is going, it is going on 120 acres of agricultural land that's been agricultural land for years and years.
I used to do photography in that barn, and the school system would let me do that with their high school seniors, and it was a beautiful rural location.
Heather?
Thank you, mayor. Jim, I think you meant the school district owns it, not the school board, yeah?
Yes, I'm sorry. The school district.
And do we know that they're double trucks? I mean, big, single is big enough.
Yes, it's in, it's a combination of both.
Okay. And does, has the school district not required any mitigation from the vendor? I mean, that's really common in our practice to require Amazon to build a roundabout, because they're going to have so much more traffic. To the best of your knowledge, has the school board not requested any mitigation?
No, and they're just a private property owner, they just want to sell the property, so they don't have any means or methods for doing enforcement action.
Okay.
And then, to another extent, the school is, they teach our kids, and they do a great job of it. Arlington's a wonderful school district. This, I spoke with Chris Sweeting the day after I gave my presentation for about an hour. She called me up, and she's in a rock, between a rock and a hard place, because they already entered into a contract, an option contract with Miles Sand and Gravel, and if they violate the, if they cancel the option, the school would be on the hook for a couple, some money. She's also, you know, the school's in tight financial needs, so I, she's, you know, in a very, very tough position. She wants to do what's best for the community, but she's right now already engaged in an option, so I don't know what the school's going to do.
So, were you speaking on behalf of the city when you made your public comment? Is it the city's official position, and us as representatives, that we're opposing the sale of this, from one public entity to this mining corporation?
We submitted comments to the county, because it's, in, you know, my opinion and Jim's, it's unacceptable for us to put, allow a development on there that's going to put 205 trucks a day on a road with no proposed improvements. It's coming through town, so it'll be similar to some of the other ones that put trucks on the road, and then we're scrambling, trying to find how to fund a $6 million roundabout, you know, for the last project, so.
So, it is the city's official position that we oppose this sale to this particular use?
Without, we want to see some mitigation that mitigates the risk for the city.
Okay. Okay. My only request would be, and, you know, go forth and make the city better, but it would be nice for me as an elected official to know ahead of time, when we're going on record, as saying the city's position is such and such. I mean, phones were ringing at my house Sunday morning, and I was like, what? I don't know anything about this. Did you guys know anything about this?
No.
Dawn, have you met with Chris Sweeting?
I've met with Chris, yeah, but I've known this, this Miles Sand and Gravel's been trying to get out there for years. I've known that.
Seems like a good education point for the council. Thanks, Jim. I appreciate your efforts.
Okay, thank you.
To speak to that, Heather, and just a reminder, Paul, because I had heard about this many years ago, when we would have our fifth Monday meetings with the school board and the hospital board, and they were talking about it at that time, and I, as a councilperson, expressed concern to the school board about it, because of my work with Jim and understanding transportation and the water system, even at that time was very limited, but...
And the impacts their decision will have on us.
Yeah, you know, and so that was, but that was probably 10 years ago, so a different school board, too, just like it's a different council, but, yeah.
Well, it's always my goal to keep council informed, so if I fell short on that with this, I do apologize for that. It certainly was not my intent, is to put anybody in a bad spot, so.
Michelle?
I think that there's a lot that happens with all the directors and Paul, and I certainly don't want you to apologize for doing your job and not informing us on something that maybe you didn't think was necessary, so I completely trust your direction and what you do. So, I don't think you need to apologize, nor do I need you to check in, and not, not about what you're saying, but I mean, in general, I don't think that I want to hear everything that is going on. You'd be on the phone with us and emailing us all day long.
Yeah, they'd have to get a bigger office.
Yeah. Well, there is a bigger office, so I don't want you to apologize for something that you're just doing your job personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne?
And I kind of just want to make sure that, I mean, I hear what Heather's saying to you, and I appreciate you coming and telling us what's going on and giving us the updates, but again, same thing, like, you got to do what you got to do, and you got to make sure that, I trust you, you know what you're doing, so thank you. Thanks for the updates.
If I might say so, it was a very heavy decision for me to do it. It came up at the last moment, because I saw, it came across my desk on the late September 29th or something, that the CUP was moving forward, and I knew I had to do something, and I wasn't going to go to the county. I just wanted to make sure that the school was aware of that. So, again, I apologize if I didn't give proper notice to you guys, but I had to act fast.
Yeah, no, and I feel this is more, it's a private entity, not the city, doing the transaction, it's more the school district. I mean, as us as a council, I don't think we can really do much about it, except try to get what we can for mitigation, because, again, we, the school district is a school district, they're not run by the city, the city council.
But you've said you're concerned about the decision.
We are concerned, yeah, we're concerned, but we don't have no say in what they finally do, is what I'm, it's a...
I don't understand what has to do with making sure county, well, we did get up to you tonight, you already made the presentation, I didn't know the city had an official position on this. Did you know the city had an official position on this?
I don't think I...
I don't think I really understand it as an official position, as much as it's just, like, just, I mean, it's just an understanding that, that before all this happens, are we aware of that we need other things, mitigation needs to occur at the same time, and in order to make sure that we're going to get the best for the city, it's them educating the school board on what the expectation would be of that sale. So, I don't know that it's, I'm good. I don't feel like I need it any more than I got today.
And I believe I, in my quarterly reports to the council in 2021, that was included in the report, and it would have been a very, very short blurb, but again, it was, I totally forgot about it until I saw, until I got the email about this project.
Yeah, it's like it fell to the wayside, nobody was doing anything with it, so we didn't know if it was still ongoing or not.
Yeah.
I think we've seen your reports. I think you have a lot of tasks and a lot of responsibilities, so just do your job, I'm good.
Okay, I think we'll move on. My report basically is the same as what Michelle reported. Heather, Michelle, it was nice to see you. Heather, Michelle, it was nice to see everybody there at the groundbreaking for the Holman Freedom Bridge Recovery Center. It was great to see, they had a pretty good turnout, it was a good, good representation. So, yeah, that's what I've got. Anybody else got anything else? Are we ready to adjourn?
I'm about to adjourn. Second. Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn, thank you.